The Lorain County Commissioners would like to welcome you to come down to the Lorain County Dog Kennel.
We have lots of dogs available for adoption. We also encourage all dog owners to register your dog each year and get a dog license.
We also have a special dog license. It's a special heart, medical care license tag for an additional $5. And the proceeds from that go to help us when we pick up a stray that's injured or needs extreme medical care.
Remember, your best friend is waiting for you.
Welcome to another broadcast of the Lorain County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Thursday mornings at 9:30 at the Lorain County Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Ilaria. These are public meetings, and as always, you are invited to attend.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning and welcome to the December 15th meeting of the Lorain County Board of Commissioners. We have lots of stuff today. Where's the dog? Oh, thank you.
You've got a cute one, Betty.
Somebody gets a Christmas present this year.
He wants to go home with you.
Can you sit? Do you know how to... yeah, you stand. This is a male beagle mix. He's a stray, four to six months old. He will be in cage 69, and he will be available on Friday, December 16th, for adoption. He would fit in someone's Christmas stocking. Look at that tail. Isn't he darling? He says, "What's going on here?" Elizabeth brought you a treat. Elizabeth brought you a treat. He'll like your treat. He says, "Turn around here. Look, look, look." You don't want that?
He just wants some lovin'.
All right, he'll go home with you, Lori. Cage 69, come and pick him up. You'll make some child a nice Christmas present, or some lonely adult. Our thought for today, which Commissioner Kalo has approved, this is from the leadership of Lorain County, is from Sharon Kleppel, Catholic Action Commission. She says, "Life is a journey, not a destination." Very nice thought, very true. This morning, first of all, I guess maybe Dan Bilman would like to talk about the Dream Award, except the Dream House Award that he traveled to Columbus to receive on behalf of several entities. Good morning, Dan.
Good morning, Commissioners. Dan Bilman, Solid Waste Director. On November 17th, a few of us went down to the State House to accept an award, and I accepted the award on your behalf for the Dream House, which was a partnership between BIA, Chamber of Commerce, JVS, Metro Parks, and the Commissioners. Very nice ceremony, and I have a few of the partners here that would like to say something to you today, and then we will give you the award at that time, after that. Thank you. Michael Challander? No, Frank.
I give seniority.
Here are the partners.
Here are the partners.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Are you looking at our partners, Frank?
Good morning, Commissioners. Yeah, these are all the partners. We actually had a chance to get them all in the same room at the same time. One of the things I think that we certainly, as the Chamber of Commerce, would like to speak to is the fact that, you know, it's been really good for Lorain County to continue to build different partnerships and collaborations to do things. And I think that this is just another fine example of the way that organizations in the county, along with county government, have an opportunity to work together to do something really good for the community. And it just so happened that we did such a nice job with it that the State of Ohio and the Governor presented us an award for excellence and energy. There were only, I think, 10 or 12 given in the State of Ohio. And so, this is pretty rare company when the Governor gives an award for excellence and energy. And I think that it just goes to show that, you know, us working together as a team for the betterment of Lorain County certainly is to the advantage of being here. With that, I will allow one of my partners to say something.
Thank you, Frank.
Good morning, everybody. I'm Bill Randall, Superintendent of Lorain County, JVS. And Frank didn't do it, but I can introduce all the partners besides Dan Bilman with Solid Waste. We need to talk to Dan about another partnership. We have Mike Challander, who's now with Lorain Growth Association. I've known Mike personally for a long time, but I never know quite where he's working. Dan Martin from Metro Parks, very involved with the school, I'm very appreciative of that. Rocco Fannin from the BIA, and of course, myself. And actually, you know, I only played a little part in this to give them the go. You know, it was our Building Trades Academy, led by Jerry Pavlik and all the teachers in the Building Trades Academy, that really worked with this project. So sometimes I'm a little embarrassed to receive an award because alls I did was give them the go-ahead and go out there and get muddy shoes once in a while looking at the project. But it was, believe it or not, I've been in career technical education 36 years. And this is one of the most unbelievable projects I've ever seen because of all the collaboration and the working closely together without any turf wars, more or less. You know, we did this project. The result was a beautiful, livable home, and the students still buzz. You know, this was a 2003 project. I see one of the students all the time because she runs the pro-desk at Lowe's, and she still talks about the project. So it was one of the rare instances where they could follow this for a year and a half. They started to build it, they started to design it, and they got to build it. And that was a wonderful experience for them. So I thank the Commissioners and all our partners for making this such a great project for our students.
And I believe that young lady is David Warko's granddaughter?
Yeah, it could be. Amy, it is, exactly.
And I met her out on the site when we had the dedication.
Yeah, that's the day we couldn't stop her from laying out floor joists because she said, "We gotta get this done." It's the type of person Amy is.
Very good.
Thank you. Good morning, Rocco Fanna, the Executive Officer with the North Coast BIA. On behalf of our over 600 members, it is and was a true pleasure to work with all of you on this very unique project. I just want to thank all of you for your forward thinking and coming together. We still get, like Bill said, rave reviews about the Dream Project. And how in the heck did these organizations come together to do this? It's that whole regional thinking and groups getting together. So we look forward to possibly doing another project, not for '06, but I've been talking with Bill about 2007. And we just look forward to working with the students, and they're our future workforce and our future leaders. Thank you.
Thank you, Rocco.
Good morning, Commissioners. Dan Martin with the Metro Parks. We were so pleased to be a partner in this project. It's nice to see a house go up next to the Metro Parks. I believe we have seven major subdivisions going up against our parks right now in the county. BIA's always been a great partner of ours, and anything we can do to help in the future, we'd be happy to.
Thank you very much. I'd just like to... go ahead, Mike, sorry.
Mike Challander, formerly with the County Chamber, now with Lorain Growth Corporation. This is not the first award the Dream has won. We are recognized in the city of Cleveland, in Cuyahoga County, by Eco City Cleveland for this project. And many groups outside of Lorain County have commented on how good it was that we partnered such a diverse group of organizations, partnered together for one project. And I'm not saying as a result of this project, but right now, the Lorain Community College has a building going up. It's a building for their business entrepreneurship program. And that building is going to be LEED certified, and LEED stands for Leadership in Energy and Environmental Design. So I think Lorain County is starting to push in the right direction regarding sustainability and efficient use of our natural resources. So with that, I'd like to thank the leadership from the Commissioners in helping get this project off the ground.
And that's something that you like, too. Just as while Dan's getting back to the microphone, the Commissioners were in Columbus for a conference these past couple days, and I walked past the old Lazarus store, and they had a sign there that says Lazarus is going to be the first green building in Columbus. So maybe they're catching on.
Very good.
Yes, I thought you'd be interested in that.
It's interesting that I'd found out about the Lazarus building. Then yesterday, at another meeting, I had the pleasure of talking to the people that were actually doing the recycling on the Lazarus building. It's quite a project. They're very serious about it. They're gonna save some money doing it.
Good.
Again, I'd like to reiterate that it was so nice to have all this cooperation from different entities. And I don't think this county or anybody around has ever seen that kind of cooperation, where everything turned out very, very well, and it's still being talked about a year or so later. So it was an accomplishment for the county, and I know that everybody was very well pleased with how the project went. If Commissioners would like to come down, or the President would like to come down, I'll give them a certificate.
I think they should all come down. Do they all want to come down?
The award that was given to us that says, "The State of Ohio would like to commend Lorain County Commissioner Sodoway's district and recognize its role in Lorain County Chamber's Dream Project, which has earned a 2005 Governor's Award for Excellence in Energy."
All right.
Congrats, Mrs. [inaudible].
Thank you very much. Thank you all.
Absolutely.
For the benefit of Ted and Lori, I just have to mention that this house was built in Carlisle County.
Beautiful, honey. Did a great job with it.
Thank you so much. Is Charles Spanky here? You know, I don't see him in the audience. He's on the program. We have a certificate that we wanted to honor him with. He's completing 31 years of service and dedication as horticulturist, Lorain County Extension. And I think maybe we got our signals crossed. We got the certificate for him, but I don't think we told him that we were gonna give it to him. They are going to have a luncheon or dinner for him later on, so I'll see that he gets it at that time. Again, thanks to our many partners on that Lorain County Dream House. Okay, I guess we're done with the fun things. Item B, brief.
Annexations. Number one, a regular annexation petition on 94.0622 acres from Eaton Township to the city of Ilaria. They are requesting this be continued on the acceptance of the agreement until Monday, January 9, 2005, at 9:30 a.m.
Jerry, do we need a motion to do that? I would assume.
Yes, Commissioner.
Also move. Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
The second one is a decision on an expedited one of 1.77 acres from Pittsfield Township to the city of Ilaria. Attorney Zabel is agent for petitioners, which are Doran Jean and Joanne J. Portman, which are the only owners of the parcel. An expedited one petition and legal description were filed with the Board of Commissioners' office on December 6th. Letters were issued to the auditor and the engineer. December 12th, engineer submitted a letter after review of the description of map that proposed annexation of 1.77 acres, of which parcel one has 1.51 acres, and parcel two has .26 acres, an original lot, 16 of Pittsfield Township to the city of Oberlin. Carrie J. Zabel is acting agent for Doran Jean and Joanne J. Portman. Upon reviewing the map and description, we have found that the legal description does follow the perimeter of the map, and both appear to be accurate. The parcel to be annexed is contiguous with the city of Oberlin.
One question. We rejected an annexation.
This is the one that you rejected. It had been totally resubmitted as a new expedited one.
All papers have been received. Okay, just as a clarification then. All right, go ahead, Jerry.
Commissioners, again, this is one of those annexations where it's not a matter of merit in deciding pro or against it. It's a question of assuring that all the necessary documents have been submitted. The clerk and I went through them. The petition was submitted under the correct statute. It was signed by all the owners of the properties. It included a list of the adjacent owners. It had the appointment of agent. As you've heard, the engineer has indicated that there was an appropriate map and description. It had the correct waiver of appeal, and there was an agreement attached. So it does meet all the statutory requirements.
And just as a point of information, is this property in the area that the agreement exists between Pittsfield Township and the city of Oberlin?
That's correct.
Is the attorney representing the petitioner's present? And do you wish to make any statement? Okay. Is there anyone else here who wishes to make any comment regarding this, even though this is not a public hearing? Okay, what is the pleasure of the board?
So moved. Approved, based on the recommendations from our attorney that it fits all the criteria.
Second.
Any further discussion? Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye. Thank you.
Okay, public hearings today, 3:00 at 10, 10:05 and 10:10 respectively, from Martin's Run and Foul Ditch in Ilaria Township, and Bannister Ditch in Eaton Township, a request to be put on permanent county maintenance. And then 11:15, the sewer hearing on ruling hits allotment. So resolutions. Number one, job and family services.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski? Aye.
Investments?
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Appropriations?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Transfers?
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Advances and repayments?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Requisitions?
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Travel expenses?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Bills?
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Under the Commissioners, authorize various personnel actions as indicated in the summary for employees within jurisdiction, Commissioners.
We're gonna have a long afternoon.
Are you gonna be there?
That's why it's gonna be a long afternoon.
Oh, shucks.
I have a... it's our last board meeting, or at least it appears to be our last board meeting. I have a considerable number of issues that we need to discuss. Some matters of litigation. I'm in possession of a fact-finding report on a collective bargaining unit that was issued out to the Sheriff's Department that we need to discuss. A number of hiring issues, and so we're gonna be a little bit a while. And I recommend that after we do the sewer hearing, that we break for lunch, and then we go into session, working on those issues.
Thank you. Okay, Theresa.
Re-accept the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorize the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor. This is due to moving the inside millage and children's services levy that passed... replacement levy that passed in November 8, 2005.
Just as a point of information, the inside millage is 1.6, and the outside millage is 7.59, and also move for approval. Second.
Further discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Award bid to Bobles Amherst for the countywide office supplies for 2006. Two bids were open on December 2nd, these being the most responsive bidder.
Also move.
I'll second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Convey the parcel of property, which is Commerce Court, to the city of Ilaria to be dedicated as a public street.
Jerry?
Commissioners, this is the completion of vacating Commerce Court so that we could do our parking, new parking lot. And what this is doing is this is reconveying back a 60-foot parcel of property so that they can have access to Second Street. And this is approving, executing the deed, and conveying that back over to Ilaria, and then Ilaria will dedicate that as a public street.
Also move.
Second. Any further discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Approve the vital statistics fee payment to various health districts in accordance with Ohio Revised Code 3705.24, in the total amount of $3,523.80 as follows. Lorain County Health Department will receive $471. Lorain City, $1,723.20. Erie County, $36. And Ilaria City Health Department, $1,293.60.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Award various bids to Gerglies for the janitorial supplies for Lorain County Administration Building. Lorain County Department of Job and Families, correctional facility in Golden Acres. Bids were open on December 2nd, and this was the most responsive complying with specifications.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Award various bids to Expidex and Icon for the copier paper, envelopes, and various paper products for Lorain County Administration Building. Department of Job and Family Services bids were open on December 2nd, and these were the most responsive complying with specifications.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Approve the NOAC on the county health plan, effective February 1, 2006.
Mr. Cardes, will this work with that date?
It's a better date for me than January 1st was, so I appreciate it. I'm working on it. There's some details that have to be worked out, and I really have not had discussions with the senior staff at NOAC yet. We've been doing a flurry of paperwork back and forth, but I can make it work by February 1st. I just didn't have enough time for January 1st.
Will this work for them?
That's their issue, Commissioner, I don't know. With all due respect, I haven't... I just told you, I haven't talked to them. I've had their senior staff members there. I sent them all the information they needed. I just don't...
Well, and I understand, and somebody needs to convey to them what the date is, though. Can Julie do that?
I will call Howard this afternoon and have a discussion with him.
Awesome. Second.
Any further discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Approve an enterance agreement with Collins-Goren-Boswick Architects, Cleveland, an amount of $71,696 to perform architectural services for Lorain County Justice Center for Lorain County Justice Center courtroom outfit. This will be paid from account Q Construction Professional Services.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Under Community Development Department, approve an enterance subrecipient agreement between the Board of Commissioners, Lorain County Urban League, Inc., Ilaria, to provide housing counseling for Lorain County's CHIP FY05 grant in the amount not to exceed $2,000 for fair housing services and $600 for housing services. This is effective December 15, 2005, through August 31, 2007, or until funds are exhausted.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Award a contract to CT Consultants, Willoughby, in the amount of $57,000 to provide professional services to administer and implement Lorain County's FY05 chip grant. $4,700 for the preparation of the CHIP FY05 will be in reverse to the County General Fund.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Award contract to American Way Audio Video, Canton, Ohio, for an audio system in Eaton Township Hall in the amount of $2,442.85 for the hearing impaired. Three quotes were received, this being the most responsive, to be paid from account CDBG-FY05.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Approve an enterance to a cooperative agreement effective January 4, 2006, through September 30, 2006, with Lorain County Chamber of Commerce to operate a Lorain County Small Business Development Center as requested from time to time by the certain business entities operating or designed to operate within Lorain County. The public purpose is to lead, teach, and serve Lorain County small businesses in order to contribute to the growth and stability of the county's economy.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Enter into revolving loan fund administration agreement with the State of Ohio Department of Development for the term of three years, beginning January 1, 2006, through December 31, 2008.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Authorize an appropriation and payback to the Lorain County General Fund salary reimbursement from CDBG-FY02 in the amount of $48,281.91.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Under Job and Families, authorize Department of Job and Families to enter into various child daycare contracts with licensed childcare providers for county FY06, and authorize Director of Job and Families to execute on behalf of the board with prosecutor's approval as to form.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Collaboration between Job and Families and Lorain County Children and Family First Council for management of TANA-funded portion of the Help Me Grow program, effective retroactive to December 5, 2005, through January 3, 2006, and Department of Job and Family Services will continue to be the fiscal agent.
So moved. So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Under Sanitary Engineer, request Lorco to formally release various properties from the 208 planning area of the Village of La Grange and the Village of La Grange will provide sanitary sewer service. This is in respect to the newly annexed properties.
It should be requested NOAAAC. The, the request should go to NOAAAC and this is a joint planning area of the county and Lorco. I believe it's necessary for us to approve the request and also move.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Under the Transit, increased fares for Lorraine County Transit effective January 1, 2006. Said fares have not been increased for 10 years.
I assume you wanted to comment on this?
Fares haven't been increased for 10 years. I don't know if anybody's going to fault us for increasing fares after 10 years. Everybody knows what's going on with the price of gas and consumables and the price of buses. I had wanted to put a escalator fare into place, I just didn't have time to get to it with transit, so we're recommending fare increases for 2006, but I will indicate to you, I will be back late next year with, with a fare that has escalator clauses in it because I think raising it a few pennies every year is better than jumping it every four or five years. We just ran out of time, as you know, it's been a very, very busy year and we didn't get the hearings done until, until the end of the year, but we need to keep the fare slowly keeping pace with our expenses or we're just going to get behind the eight ball like we are right now. I have a copy of those fares here for anybody that wants to see them later on and I would appreciate the Commissioner's support so that we can continue to try to operate a good transit system for the residents of Lorraine County.
This increase based on 2005 riderships will generate $100,000. It's an increase of 19 to 25 percent. For the Airport Express, the increase is 50 to 300 percent.
That's correct, Commissioner.
I'll move for approval.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Under the Board of Elections, Amendment Resolution 05994 adopted December 8th, awarding contract to SM Fox Construction, Inc., Alaria in the amount of $65,674 for the alterations for the electric system and system at the Lorraine County Board of Elections. This amendment is to reflect the amount should have been a dollar more, which is $65,675.
They should have given us the dollar?
Unfortunately, Commissioners, the.
They should have given us the dollar.
Well, no, they, they actually, they bid it, so it couldn't be changed. We, we had it wrong and it came up a dollar over.
A dollar. Awesome.
Second.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Under the Engineer, issuance of sale notes at the County of Lorraine in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $5 million in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of paying cost of making permanent improvements to roads, highways and bridges within the County of Lorraine in cost of issuance hereof.
You want to elaborate a little on this, please?
I can. We, this is a program that was initiated between the Board of Commissioners and County Engineer Carney. We did his portion a couple of years ago, was very successful, and then the Board was agreeable to supporting, working collaboratively with him and the cities and villages to try to get funding to them, cost-effective funding, inexpensive funding, zero-based loans and so forth, so that they could get in line for road funding. One of the, one of the problems there is when you don't have any money, you can't get any money. You need money to get money. You need money for the engineering, you need money for your plans. Those that are prepared to go when the funding shows up are the ones that are funded first. You have to be all ready to go with your project and some of the, some of the cities have been having a real struggle finding money to get in line and then they've paid for something and they're waiting in line and it's, it's almost like having inventory on the shelf and that costs you money. So the Board and Mr. Carney came up with this plan to assist them and he's backing this bond issue with his motor vehicle gas tax and he has a reimbursement schedule with, with the people that are being borrowed the money, but there's a certain period of years that they pay nothing back and then it's a low-interest loan. But the county will be made whole from the proceeds from motor vehicle gas tax, which has been a very stable fund over the years and has seen good revenue flow. That said, if tomorrow, you know, the state repealed motor vehicle gas tax or something happened there, the county would be on the hook for paying those obligations if and/or the cities didn't pay those things because Mr. Carney is counting on getting reimbursed somewhere along the line from, from those entities. There's some risk. I think the risk is manageable and I think it's marginal, but there is some. Plus, I had a discussion with Commissioner Kallo yesterday regarding the amount of outstanding debt that we have with respect to our geo-capacity. I, I need to just caution the Board that we, we're not carrying a significant amount of debt, but we're carrying enough debt now where the rating agencies are going to be, you know, watching us very closely with regards to our bond rating. I don't, I don't think we have a problem, but I want to let you know that so that when we talk about things in the future, you're aware that additional debt could, could impact our, our rating structure. I also, though, informed Bond Counsel on our bond underwriting that I wanted to get the market early this year because, you know, you know how the local government issue is and when that occurs, I anticipate a, a sharp decrease in our bond rating. It's just going to happen because our revenues are going to dip while expenses are going to remain stable and anything we need to do to finance right now, we should be doing early. In the event that that population shift comes, I don't want to be trying to, to access the bond market after that or, because they'll be aware of that and our rating will be, will not be as high and the, the cost of the borrowing will be more expensive. So it's probably a better time that we do this as early as possible.
Questions?
I spoke to you yesterday and I thought earlier in the year we agreed to 4 million. Did you speak to Mr. Carney about that?
No, in fact, I, I'm sorry, forgot we talked last evening and no, I have not had a discussion with Mr. Carney on that. The, 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 we went back and listened to the tape and the 4 to 5 million figure was, was out there and, and, you know, Mr. Carney's aggressively trying to do a good job, so I, I think he went to the maximum end of the permissible parameter that, that we put out there. So I think, Teresa, you listened to the tape, was Shelley, right?
Yes.
It was 4 to 5 million?
4 to 5 million, yes.
I was hoping closer to 4, but it's a great program and it has a lot of stability.
And he's got commitments from the other entities for over 5 million, if I'm not mistaken?
My understanding is we have about $5.6 million worth of request.
So we're second in line on the hook for this? Motor vehicle gas tax?
I would say third.
Third?
Because Carney has agreements that he has to secure before he can fund that, that pay back the county and if that payback doesn't come, motor vehicle gas tax has to take the bite. So I would say we're third in line. Even motor vehicle gas tax was eliminated tomorrow, the, the borrowing entities would still be on the hook for payback. We may have some period of time where we have to front the payment because there's, there's a period, maybe a year or two before payback begins, but I think I'm comfortable that, that the risk is manageable.
Okay. Well, it's a good program and he's proved himself in the past to do a great job with, with this, so.
Well, my understanding is we'll generate about $40 million on the churning effect and on bringing federal dollars here in the Lorraine County to fund these projects and those dollars will churn also. I, you know, I think that the, the $5 million will represent about 5 to 10 percent of the overall project cost, so we're talking about a huge amount of money coming into infrastructure in the county and then being spent here and then being re-churned again and so it's going to help the, the economy here and it, but it's a two or three-year cycle, too. It's not going to help tomorrow or even next year. It's going to take a couple of years, but, but it definitely benefits us in the long run.
Yeah, there's not many things that happen overnight, so it's a start.
And I don't see the motor vehicle gas tax going away any day soon. I'll so move.
Second.
Any further discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Under MRDD, request county auditor pursuant to Ohio Revised Code 5705.03, certify to the Board of Commissioners to total current tax valuation at Lorraine County and the amount of revenue that would be generated by 1.8 mils with a continuing levy and a 1.8 mils renewal levy for five years from Lorraine County Board of MRDD.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Under the Sheriff, Amendment Resolution 05899 adopted November 3rd, entering into physician's assistance agreement with Brian T. Davis. This amendment is reflecting the compensation will increase by 3 cents per year.
3 percent.
3 percent.
Did I say 3 cents?
3 cents.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Let's go to our public hearings. First public hearing is going to be Martin's Run Lateral in Alaria Township. In accordance with Section 613107 of the revised code, notice was given to consider placing the Martin's Run Lateral in Alaria Township on permanent county maintenance. Martin's Run Lateral was constructed by using county ditch funds. Part of this agreement was to place the ditch under county maintenance after the construction. Total cost of construction was $37,110.59. Proposed assessment rate for residential lots, if a parcel is 10 acres or less designated would be $30 or parcel designated agriculture under 10 acres or parcel greater than 10 acres is $3 per acre. Maintenance collection will be $636.15 per year with 21 parcels being assessed. Resolution 05943 adopted November 17th, scheduled this hearing. Notice was published in Chronicle Telegram on December 1st and 20 property owners were notified by certified mail on November 28th. Two owners, Blair and Jesus Christ Latter Day Saints, had never responded to the certification.
Okay, anyone who would like to make comment at this public hearing, would you please stand to be sworn in by the Assistant Prosecutor?
Anybody who's going to say anything? Do each of you swear or affirm that the statements that you give shall be the truth as you shall answer unto God or under penalty of the law of perjury?
Thank you. Bill Holtzman from the Engineers' Office.
Good morning, Commissioners. Just wanted to mention that this project was completed and administered by the Soil and Water Conservation Service. They're here today to answer any questions as well. The work was completed and as per the county ditch program, it's appropriate to put it under permanent maintenance.
Thank you, Bill. Sir, would you please come to the microphone and state your name?
My name's Gary Hendershot and I live at 8904 West Ridge Road. When I went to the town meetings and agreed to my tax increase to maintain this ditch, I'd done so because the people there told me that the ditch was going to be maintained and mowed once a year. And I found out what they have done on my particular piece of property is they cut down some trees that I really didn't want cut down and they mowed the backside of the ditch, leaving my side of the ditch towards my house extremely weedy. And the reason that I agreed to the tax increase was to get rid of those weeds and have them cut down and supposedly they were going to spray the weeds so that they didn't come back. And as far as I'm concerned, that has not been done.
Can someone?
Thank you.
Respond to Mr. Hendershot's issues?
Are you on, which ditch are you on, sir? Is this one of the?
I'm on the one that's behind me, I'm on West Ridge Road.
The foul road ditch?
I believe it's called the foul road ditch, yes.
We all got that. That, that's the next hearing, Mr. Hendershot.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, that's all right.
Excuse me.
And, but you've asked a question, so can you answer it for him, Bill?
Yeah, I know our current program is, you know, we, we try to mow the ditches twice a year, you know, and, and that project was just completed, so it would have been mowed once and I, I don't know if they, you know, the, actually, there was enough growth there. You know, we don't mow them like a yard, you know, when the grass gets like this tall, then they're mowed. And then, in fact, next year we're going into the spring program that you referenced there, we're going to be spraying the ditches in addition to mowing them. So I, as far as what was done on there, I don't know, George, if you know anything more on that? George was one of our representatives on that project or?
Mickey Tippel.
Yeah, Mickey Tippel from Soil and Water Conservation District.
Is anyone being sworn in, jury?
Yeah, raise your hand, I swear.
Drainage coordinator.
Please.
Answer to God or under penalty of the law of perjury?
I do.
Thank you.
I don't know exactly which property you're talking about on it, but if you have a problem, we'll come out and look at it and see if there's something that we can do different. I mean, there is going to be a maintenance on that in the spring as part of the contract so that there's not the lag time between when maintenance money is available to the county engineers.
Okay.
We are going to do another maintenance on that in the spring under the ditch program so that it doesn't get a lag time.
Fair enough.
If you have a problem, we'll come look at it.
Mr. Hendershot, if you contact them, they'll come out and look at what you're talking about and see if they can't rectify the issue.
We'll take care of it.
My, my only frustration is that you only did one side of the ditch, the backside that I don't see. I really want the other side mowed down the weeds.
Well, we can take care of that.
See if we can address your problem.
At the public meeting or at the meeting, if we'd known you wanted something different, we'd have done it differently, so.
Okay.
Not a problem.
All right.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Gentleman in the green plaid shirt, you have a comment? Your name, please.
Have you sworn in on?
You didn't, you didn't swear.
I'll tell the truth.
My only frustration is that you only did one side of the ditch, the backside that I don't see. I really want the other side mowed down the weeds.
Well, we can take care of that.
See if we can address your problem.
At the public meeting or at the meeting, if we'd known you wanted something different, we'd have done it differently, so.
Okay.
Not a problem.
All right.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Gentleman in the green plaid shirt, you have a comment? Your name, please.
Have you sworn in on?
You didn't, you didn't swear.
I'll tell the truth.
Do you swear that the statements that you give shall be the truth as you shall answer unto God or under penalty of the law of perjury?
I do.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Blair? Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Now, we're going to move to foul road. Teresa, would you read the details, please? I think we're in time.
Foul road. In accordance with Section 6131 of the Ohio Revised Code, notice was given to consider placing the foul ditch in Alaria Township on permanent county maintenance. Foul ditch was constructed using county ditch funds. Part of this agreement was to place the ditch under county maintenance after the construction. Total cost of construction was $22,788.95. Proposed assessment rate for residential lots, if parcels 10 acres or less designated would be $30 or parcel designated agriculture under 10 acres or parcel greater than 10 is $3. Maintenance collection will be $873.72 per year with 26 parcels being assessed. Resolution 05943 adopted November 17th, scheduled this hearing. The notice was published in the Chronicle Telegram on December 1st. 23 property owners were notified by certified mail on November 28th. Three owners, Whitedd and Lowery, never responded and Vincent was under deliverable with no new address available.
Okay, now, anybody who wants to comment on the foul ditch, would you please stand and be sworn in?[1460.51]
I'll do it again.
All right. Thanks, Mickey.
Do each of you swear or affirm that the statements that you shall make shall be the truth as you shall answer unto God or under penalty of the law of perjury?
Okay, Bill Holtzman first, and then you, sir.
Yeah, the Foul Road Ditch is a ditch in Leary Township that was also cleaned under the group request procedure using county ditch funds. The work was administered by the Soil and Water Service. The work was completed, and it's time to put the ditch on permanent maintenance per the programs.
Thank you, Bill. Now, sir, your question.
No, sir, my, well, the only question I have, yes, ma'am. Thank you for your time, sir. My name is Conway, Jim Conway, and I live at 8822 West Ridge Road, and this ditch cleaning was done behind my property. As far as I could tell, it's fine. They cut it down, as I said, on the west side of the ditch. They cut it down and mowed inside the ditch. I was just going to inquire, and it was already partially answered, they will do it twice a year, before the spring rains is what I was hoping, because that grass does grow up quick. I'd have gone back in over my mower and tried to keep it down a little bit, but I want to make sure that they were going to come back at least once a year. I hear twice a year now. That's good.
I think.
And the other question was, what about any filling in the ditch, other than mowing? Are they going to do any, once it settles, we're going to have dirt go back into the ditch. Are they going to do any more cleaning rather than mowing? That was my only two questions.
Okay, and Mickey or Bill, who's going to respond to that? Bill?
In response to that, we inspect the ditch, and if we see some issues that need to be washed out, settlement, they'll be addressed, you know, prior to the mowing.
Oh, good.
Okay.
Will it be twice a year, spring and fall, or?
Well, the program is to attempt to mow all the ditches twice per year in the spring and then the fall.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Conway. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, my name is Shirley Masri, and I live at 9108 West Ridge. And in August, after they worked on the ditch on Foul Road, I had severe flooding on my property, I have photographs. And I don't think what they did was accurate because it flooded my husband's pole barn, and it came up almost to the back of the house. So I think there's more that has to be done to that property.
Did you contact anyone over at Soil and-
Yeah, he called. I don't know if they came out or not, but he did call that night. But we have photographs of how severe it came up. He has a lot of equipment in the pole barn, and it came up past the pole barn towards our house.
Mickey, are you aware of this?
I think Mr. Zunich, who was Drainage Coordinator at the time, did go out and looked at it, and my understanding is that it's literally over top of the FAA driveway.
Yeah, I have photographs of it.
The same one that flooded every place else. I mean, it was like five and a half inches of rain. There is a driveway culvert there that belongs to the-
FAA.
-Vortax site where the, part of the Hopkins, you know, light pattern runway. And as far as I know, it just was more rain than the culvert could handle, and it's in the neighborhood of 36 or 40-inch culvert under that driveway.
But before this work was done, there was no flooding. And all of a sudden, now we have all this flooding.
Well, you know, that was a major drainage event, so, I mean, there was a lot more rain than we typically have during that event, so it could be that that ditch was just overwhelmed with the amount of rain we had. Most of the streams and rivers in the county were inundated with that rain event, probably the river. The ditches will handle a normal storm, but when you get in an event like that, you know, the intent wasn't to make them bigger, it's just to clean them and keep them under maintenance.
We can look into it and see if both culvert sites, if you'd like. We'll come out and see.
Do you follow through on that?
Aye.
See if there's anything further that's needed on our part. All right, thank you. Is there anyone else on the Foul Ditch? Okay, I move the hearing be closed.
Second.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
I move the assessments be- Becker as outlined.
Second.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Now, the final hearing, we're still on a timeframe. It's the Bannister Ditch in Eaton Township.
In accordance with Section 6131.07 of the Ohio Revice Code, notice was given to consider placing the Bannister Ditch in Eaton Township on permanent county maintenance. Bannister Ditch was constructed using county ditch funds. Part of this agreement was to place the ditch under county maintenance after construction. Total cost of the construction was $31,623.14. The proposed assessment rate for residential lots, if a parcel is 10 acres or less designated, would be $30, or parcel designated agriculture under 10 acres or parcel greater than 10 is $3. Maintenance collection will be $645.75 per year with 15 parcels being assessed. Resolution 05943 adopted November 17th, scheduled this hearing. Notification was published in Chronicle Telegram on December 1st. 10 property owners were notified by certified mail on November 28th. Two owners, Barbennick, never responded, and Love was undeliverable with no new address available.
Okay, anybody who would like to speak, and or comment on this is asked to stand to be sworn in again. Bill, I guess you gotta be sent. Mickey, probably you. Any other resident who wants to comment, question?
Do each of you swear or affirm that the statements you shall give shall be the truth as you shall answer unto God or under penalty of the law of perjury?
I do.
All right, thank you. Bill Holtzman?
Again, this was another project that was cleaned with the county ditch fund program. The work was completed, and it's appropriate to put this ditch under permanent maintenance.
Okay. And Mickey, do you have anything to add? All right. Any person who has comments in the audience, questions? Seeing none, I move the hearing be closed.
Second.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
I move the 15 parcels be assessed as outlined, totaling $645.75 per year.
Second.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
I'd just like to comment that these ditches were all cleaned using funds that the county commissioners allocated to the Soil and Water Conservation District. And I was at their dinner a week ago, and they especially applauded Rob Scheitler, Leary Township trustee, who's in the audience. They said Rob knew how to work the system, got those ditches cleaned, and he took us out to show us the Martin's Run, I believe. And I'd also like to ask Mr. Pandey to introduce your new supervisor. I don't know her right title, but introduce her to our Board of Commissioners, please, and the audience, so we can see who she is.
This is Nancy Byer, district prosecutor, and this is Marco, another technician.
All right, those are the new guy and gal on the block. Welcome. Thank you for coming this morning. Okay. Pardon me? Oh, it's too bad. Okay. All right, we're done with that part of the public hearings, right, Teresa?
Uh-huh.
Until 11:15. Okay, we can go back to the-
Mr. Cortez.
Mr. Cortez. Well, I wonder, you're part of the-
He's caught off guard here.
Are you going to talk about the appropriations? They're finished. I don't know.
What's that?
The appropriations. We hear totals, are you ready to approve the total?
Our budget totals?
Mm-hmm.
I thought we were going to talk about that some more.
You want to? Okay, well, as far as I'm concerned. Okay.
Yeah, let's talk about it.
Well, we just need to know what you're doing. Sorry.
The Commissioners have a couple issues here. The first one is our 28-year-old generator behind the building has kind of crapped out. It's really given us good service over the years, but it's no longer able to provide for what we need. We had a seizure of the engine. Given its age, it's just not feasible to repair that particular generator. We've been having problems off and on for about two years with it. The solutions that have been offered in the past have been very, very costly. We do have a spare generator that was taken from the jail when the jail was upgraded and they needed a bigger generator, and it's out at the engineers, but no matter how we tried, it was still going to be a $50,000 or $60,000 process to bring the bigger generator here. Because of its size, it would have been located very far back in the alley by the property line with the Chronicle, and then we would have had to build the hut on it and new power lines and so forth, fuel tanks. I just was struggling with this, and we struggled with it so long that the generator, you know, just died. So I was talking to Director Shaver.
Die.
Well, I was talking to Director Shaver afterwards, and once again, the issue of using that older generator was brought up, and I instructed him to find a better cost solution, or that we would go without a generator, because the generator here has, does not power up the whole building, so people go home anyway if the generator's on. It just provides some auxiliary lighting and phone and so forth, and given the cost, I wasn't sure that it was something that we needed to do. So Mr. Shaver got busy and was able to find a used generator in Maryland that is the exact same generator that we have and will fit right on our platform and basically plug in.
It's not 28 years old, is it?
It's older, but it only has 314 run hours on it, and it's not necessarily just the age of the generator, but it's how many hours it's been run and how much service it's provided. It only has 314 hours of runtime, which is nothing in the world of a diesel engine, and it's in excellent condition. We can get it shipped here and installed and running by the 23rd of December for $12,750. I'm really, really pleased with this work. It just, it just goes to show we continue to, you know, to buckle down on finding solutions that don't immediately present themselves, and put some effort in, we can save a lot of money. I believe that, you know, Dennis has saved us, you know, good $35,000 or $40,000 with this proposal here.
Jenny, Jim, you said that original generator, how old did you say it was?
I think like 28 years old.
He says here it's 37 years old. It's even older than it's on. Sounds like a good deal to me. We want a motion to approve it?
I would like you to make a motion to approve that, yes.
I'll so move.
Second.
Further discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Commissioners, I have an additional salary transfer here that just came this morning, was still a little short, one of these. It's just pre-functionary, and it's not any new money, it's just moving money around to make payroll. I just, I just received that this morning.
Do we need a motion on that, or can be incorporated in our?
I believe you can incorporate it into your package, and it would be numbered, why not?
We've already done that. I'll just make another motion.
This is for what? I'm sorry?
It's just a transfer to make sure that we have enough money for salaries. We still were, those accounts were still a little short. We'll be, we'll be doing a lot of this. We won't be adding any new money, but we'll be moving back and forth, trying to exhaust those accounts to make sure that we can meet all of our commitments for year end. This is not unusual.
This is out of our general fund or the auditor's general fund?
It's out of the, out of the auditor's. It's his funding.
Okay.
I believe, has he signed that? I believe he's signed that, right?
No.
He's aware of it, correct, Julie? Yeah, okay.
Teresa, do you want that? This too.
I also need a second, if there's going to be a second.
Second.
Any further discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Commissioners, you know, we were all down in Columbus for the winter conference, and we attended some very exciting sessions, and for Mr. Ashenhurst, I would just like to let you know I went to a nice session on biofuels and compressed natural gas vehicles, trying to get some additional insight, because I know you've been championing that cause.
He only went because he knew that you'd ask him questions about it. That's the truth.
I made him go, too, David. I was interested in going. I enjoyed it a lot. But it was, it was, it was very interesting, and I collected a lot of data, and we still have a long way to go in Lorain County for CNG and biofuels, but we're starting to take a serious look at it, and the state is, too, so there was some interesting information down there. There was a lot of other things I attended. I'm sure the Board will brief you on some of the things they did, but I just specifically wanted to tell you I had done that. This is our last meeting of the year, so, you know, I want to wish all the residents and all the employees in Lorain County a happy holiday. I think it's been a great year with the new board. I think we've had a lot of successes. We've had a lot of learning along the year. As far as I'm concerned, it's been one of the best years I've spent in county government, and I'm appreciative of still being here, serving the residents and the Board of Commissioners. But I do have one request before we close our meeting this afternoon when you're all done. I would like to take a moment and have a moment of silence and remember our brothers and sisters in arms in Kuwait, Kuwait, good, in Iraq, and remembering that they're not going to be home this holiday season, and that they're out there on the front line for us to make the world a better place. Thank you.
Mr. Innes, Assistant County Prosecutor?
I just wanted to correct something I said earlier about the deed. I indicated it was 60 feet wide, it's only 33 feet.
Nothing else, Jerry?
No.
Okay. Commissioner Laurie?
Well, like Jim said, we all attended the County Commissioners Conference, and they had a lot of educational seminars and a big trade show, and we got to meet a lot of county commissioners from other counties facing the same type of things we face here in Lorain County. I think it's a great opportunity to go, but I just wished they would host this in October or November, because there's just so much to do here in December. A lot of us even came home early because of the issues happening here and trying to prepare for this last meeting. And this being our last meeting, I'd just like to wish everybody a happy holiday and a safe New Year.
Yeah, as Laurie said, and Jim, it was a great County Commissioners meeting, a lot of good things to learn, biodiesel and pushing all the recycling and the wind turbines and the trade shows, and everyone down there talking about common concerns.